We will call this council meeting of the Basford, Leesville Governing Body to order at this time. Pardon me? We will call the council to order. It is Pastor Tom Means in attendance. I've asked him to come and give us the invocation this evening. Pastor, will you come forth at this time?
Our heavenly Father, we declare Jesus Christ is Lord of all and of the people of Basford, Leesville. And we thank you, Lord, that you have all wisdom. We ask that you place wisdom upon everyone in this room tonight. And Lord, we ask you that you would reign in righteousness and justice in every town hall meeting that we have, that the truth will always come to light. And heavenly Father, we pray that your divine will and holy purposes will be accomplished in us in the name of your mighty Son, Lord Jesus Christ. And we thank you that you love us in spite of ourselves, in Jesus' name.
We thank Pastor Means of the praise church for the invocation. We ask that you stand if you can for the pledge of allegiance to the Lord.
Our pledge of allegiance to the Lord. Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. These proceedings will proceed according to the agenda as outlined. Next on the agenda, item four, approval of minutes, first, regular council meeting, March tenth, two thousand and fourteen. Council, what's your pleasure?
Motion to accept.
Motion to move to accept. Third, second. There's a second. Is there any discussion? Council, council district one?
District one votes yes.
Council district two?
Yes.
Council district three?
District three votes yes.
Council district six? Five.
District five votes yes.
And council district seven?
Yes.
Councilman district four votes yes. Next, approval of minutes for the council work session, April the third, two thousand and fourteen. Council, what is your pleasure?
Motion to move.
Second.
Has been moved and properly second that the minutes for the council work session dated April the third, two thousand and fourteen be accepted. Is there any discussion? Councilman district one?
District one votes yes.
Councilman district two?
Yes.
Councilman district three?
District three votes yes.
Councilman district five?
Yes.
Councilman district seven?
Yes.
And councilman district four votes yes. Approval of minutes, special council meeting, April third, two thousand and fourteen. Council, what's your pleasure?
Motion to accept.
Second.
It has been moved and properly second that the special council meeting, April third, two thousand and fourteen, minutes be accepted. I believe that meeting was deferred to a later date. Councilman district one?
Council, district one votes yes.
Councilman district two?
Yes.
Councilman district three?
District three votes yes.
Councilman district five?
Yes.
Councilman district seven?
Yes.
And councilman district four votes yes. Next on the agenda is the mayor's report in the absence of our mayor, who is at the hospital with her mother. We solicit, we will pray us this evening for her mother and the trapped family. The next regular council meeting will be May the twelfth, two thousand and fourteen. Also, we'd like to remind council that a work session is also scheduled for April the twenty-third at six o'clock to continue the rules and procedures of this governing body at the Basford Fire Department. April the twenty-third at six o'clock PM. Council Department has a committee report, Center Midlands, Councilmember Odell?
No report this month.
No report. Environment and planning advisory committee, Councilman Kane?
The council has received an email from EPAD. We only meet quarterly and there's no business, we don't need to hear from us, no meeting this quarter.
And the Economic Development Committee met on April the third. The meeting was called to order by the chairman of the committee, Brent Shealy. Betty McWater briefed the committee on the industry appreciation committee that was formed by the chairman at the February two thousand and fourteen Economic Development Committee meeting. And Ms. McWater's report was that the committee identified eleven businesses in the Basford, Leesville area. And those eleven businesses were in industry and light manufacturing. And they all had a Basford, Leesville mailing address. The recommendations to the Economic Development Committee was to begin communication in five different ways. Host a meet and greet so that the Basford Business Association and the Leesville Emergence Association, the Chamber of Commerce, the Town Council of Basford, Leesville, and representatives of each industry would come together for a meet and greet to better get acquainted and informed about the business services and products that were offered by these eleven businesses. And to inform the community about the local industries in the community. Three was at the annual Chamber of Commerce banquet each year to recognize each industry in some manner. And to encourage representation of each industry to become involved in the civic organizations and giving them a voice in the community. And to actively seek input and determining the needs of the industry in the community that the community might be able, better able to serve these industries. Also, Assistant Town Manager Ted Luckadoo was in attendance and gave the committee an update on the activities of the town in reference to the water project and briefed them on updates to the industrial park. The Economic Development Committee goals for two thousand and fourteen were discussed. And that was to complete the sidewalks on Highway one, to beautify and maintain entrance signs into the city from all directions, to implement plans for the beautification of the infrastructure or the inner beautification of the town's streets and roads. And to make sure that the progress for the industrial park would continue, that we might be able to attract new industry into the area. The Economic Development Committee goals also consisted of recognizing the existing businesses in the town. Mike Taylor, the Chamber of Commerce director, gave us updates on the pennies for progress, which will be on the ballot in November, that we might be able to add a one cent penny to improve the infrastructure in Lexington County, throughout the county. The county plus municipalities have submitted projects that they feel are noteworthy in their communities. And an independent committee has been formed to evaluate all of the projects to decide which ones would have priority. And hopefully, all of them will be completed based upon the revenue from the pennies for progress. Our superintendent gave us an update on the Basford, Leesville high school property. He indicated that they had painted the doors, taken the boarded doors down to give it a more suitable appearance in the community. And everybody thought that was a positive step in the right direction. And that they were continuing to work to make that property more eye appealing in the community until they decide exactly what they're going to do with the future of that property. Mike Taylor gave us an update on the Ministerial Association. For those of you who are not aware, the Ministerial Association in the Basford, Leesville area is up and running. We're attempting to get all of the pastors who serve and are legal here in the Basford, Leesville area involved. And they have decided to have a community service on this Friday, the eighteenth, of the seven last saints of Christ from the cross. We encourage all of you all to come out and support that endeavor. And this is the first project, community-wide, that the Ministerial Association is sponsoring. That was pretty much the gist of the meeting. Councilmember Taylor was in attendance. Is there anything you would like to add that I?
No, I pretty much covered it.
Thank you all so much. Next on the agenda, the manager's report in the absence of our town manager, who was under the weather this evening. We're going to ask Assistant Town Manager Ted Luckadoo to give us the manager's report.
Good evening, council, everyone that chose to come out, and I appreciate you for coming out. Council, you've received the financial statements and check registers for the month of March. If you have any questions, let us know. Last council meeting, there was discussion about Rainbow Drive and exactly who owned and maintained that road. After research, Lexington County did state that they did own and operate and control that portion of roadway. We talked with them about the paving of that road. They have sent out a petition to the homeowners on that street for them to petition to the county to have it paved. So we're trying to get something rolling at this time on that. Byrds Court, HUD is getting ready to release the funds to begin paving Byrds Court. Hopefully, that'll begin sometime next month. Also, we got a meeting with Lexington County May first to talk about the time, the exact timeline on that paving as well. Got some needs and information that we need to talk about with some of the people that live on that street. Our matching portion of that CBG grant has been paid. So we're moving forward, Byrds Court should be done hopefully here in the next couple of months. Lexington County is ready to get started. As far as FEMA, the winter storm that occurred February tenth through the fourteenth, we, the state, did receive its emergency declaration, the president signed off on that. There are costs, I attended a meeting with FEMA at the economic, at the Emergency Operations Center in Lexington County. And we are eligible for some funds to be refunded for our costs, things such as debris removal, any overtime calls, salary calls, some of the functions of the emergency shelter that we had in place that did get utilized by one person. So we are going through that process now. I completed the request for public assistance today, which is the first step. Got another meeting, the seventeenth, regarding this, at the Emergency Operations Center. That's it.
I have a couple of questions. Hey, three things, um, just like you, I'm gonna call it just a little. Council, you mentioned that you had briefed the economic development on the water and sewer. Do you have the total cost of the water project at this point?
I do, not an exact cost, we're in the, uh, just the PDR stage. It hasn't been put out for actual cost bidding.
What do you estimate, what do you estimate that cost to be?
It was the option one cost, the conventional cost. I can't remember that exact number off the top of my head. It was the option one from the workshop that night.
Is that the eighteen million, the sound?
That sounds right.
The eighteen million, does that include the lines coming to town, water lines built to town? Was that just the building?
You know, I'm not sure about that. I would have to look, I don't know if that eighteen million covered the cost of the treated water line coming back to town or not.
Have we, have we secured the loan for that project yet?
That should be coming here soon. That's.
Now, as far as the industrial park, what is the total cost of that project?
That should be determined, what was out there was one point five. A lot of our water crews can do a lot of the on-site work. So the exact cost is not known. Right now, the engineering is underway. Once the engineering is done, that will tell us a lot more about what exactly has to be put. And, you know, that, that part will be bid out and will be done by construction crews. As far as the on-site water, a lot of our crew can do that, so.
Okay, what do you, what's the total estimated cost?
As far as?
The industrial part, the entire project, what's the total, what do you imagine that that would cost?
One point, one point two and one point five million.
Why didn't it go to two point four million?
Two point four million didn't take into account that we can do some of the work ourselves. Taking that into account, that does reduce the cost.
To what, one point five?
Between one point two and one point five is the projected cost with some of our guys doing the work.
Yeah, now, what do you project the cost for, for the upgrades that need to be done to the actual plant?
I'm still, we're still evaluating exactly everything that needs to be done out at the sewer plant. With Tim Schumpert on board now, he is evaluating everything out there. We have begun the process of making what minor repairs we can afford to make right now. Certainly, if he comes back with specific numbers. And once he gains overall valuation of everything that does need to be done out there, we can look at some costs.
All right, now, are you familiar with the PRE that did, owned that plant, two thousand and seven? You used that as a?
I do not notice specifics of that plant.
You and I went out there and you remember what this had said about that plant? It was obsolete.
Well, there are upgrades, maybe that.
All right, and now, you don't know how much those upgrades?
I do know.
Are you, have you familiarized yourself with the PRE from two thousand and seven?
I am not.
Okay, that, in that document, it said thirteen million dollars was what was needed. This was done by Tim Schumpert himself. In two thousand and seven, he estimated that to upgrade that plant would be thirteen million dollars. So I'll send that to you. And I'm gonna skip over a little bit, let's just be, mention Tim Schumpert. Tim Schumpert, I understand, has cut some water bills for some residents, is that true? Has he reduced water bills for some residents?
Tim Schumpert himself has not reduced them. We have been, we have been going out doing some meter checking for some people who've had concerns about their water bill. And if it was determined that there were leaks and things of that nature, then, yes, we have adjusted the amounts of their water bills based on that.
Based on leaks, nothing else?
I'm not familiar with every single situation that.
I understand what I'm saying, you're saying that?
Some bills have been adjusted that we know that issues were there on that property.
What were the issues?
Water leaks. There was one that we didn't fully identify. It wasn't a leak, but no one was living in the home. But there was a high percentage of usage. And we took the totality of circumstances regarding that, and we made a, made the decision to adjust the cost of that.
So you only, you only adjusted if there's an issue with leaks or something that's not, not anything that we've done? Is that what you're saying? And who has the authority to do that?
That would ultimately be, the town manager would have any final approval for any adjustments that are made.
Do you know how many adjustments have been made?
I do not.
Sixty things?
I do not.
Do you have a round figure for that?
I do not.
One, two, three?
I really don't know. I, I don't do, deal a lot day to day with the actual bills. Been working on budget, been working on rules and procedures, workshops and things of that nature, so. Personally, myself, I haven't been in on the waters.
Okay, so Joanne's been the person, not Tim Schumpert, not you, Joanne's been the person that's reduced these water bills?
I would say so.
And you don't know how many she's done?
I do not.
The final thing that I, that I have to ask you about is that I read in the Twin City newspaper that the mayor had said in a private meeting with the county that the town was out of, out of money. And I agree with her. She said that if, once we do this water project, or if we do this water project, that the town would be out of money. She subsequently clarified that in the Twin City news, I think Anna wrote a long article about that. And she said that she was not referencing the town itself being out of money, but accounts, capital accounts associated with infrastructure. Correct?
Well, I can tell you, I was in that meeting. And the comment that we, the town of Basford, Leesville is out of money was never said. What was said was, is that the town of Basford, Leesville would need to seek funding to help us if there was additional funding options out there to assist us. It was put in a synopsis of that meeting that she had stated that we were out of money and that was not stated.
Okay, because she restated that in the article. She said that, she said that, and she said that what she was referencing was not that the town was out of money, but these accounts were out of money. So now, which one is, did she say it?
Mayor, if I could speak. I think this was in, in reference to, this meeting was in reference to the industrial park only. It was not talking about the town as a whole. I also was informed, because I ask these questions as well, that this, the statement was made as they were going out the door that they would have to look for additional funding for the industrial park. Nothing was said about the town being broke, which was probably.
Well, I don't know if it says the town broke, but were you at that meeting?
I was not, but I did ask the same question as you did.
Okay, but now I'm just talking about what Rita actually said. I read the email, did you read the email?
Well, I'm at the point that these things aren't on the agenda. And until the mayor's here to actually address them, I don't think that this is the time for us to discuss this.
You have the manager's report, and I'm asking him to give, to give a report, he said that he cared. You comfortable answering the questions?
Well, I mean, I can answer what I know.
Okay, that's all, because you were at the meeting.
I was.
The councilperson, you weren't.
I can't, I'll say this, I can't answer verbatim.
I'm just trying to get to the point
Okay.
where the mayor said, in several different ways, it was recorded, what she said. She said it in the email. Now, we don't have an issue here because the engineer that we have hired to do this project took the notes. And what I'm hearing is that that person can't take those notes.
The, those are just words, that portion of the notes was inaccurate.
The other rest of it was okay, but not what she said.
The rest of it was correct, yeah.
Okay, but not what she said, all right. And now, let's get back to the point where she said that she said, that what he said was accurate. She said in the article, Anna wrote the article. She said that, she said that the town was out of money. She said it twice in the notes, in the minutes for that meeting. And then she said in the paper, yeah, I said that, but that's not what I, I was referring to, capital accounts. Are you familiar with that?
Look, council, okay, how can we?
Sorry, Charles.
I can't hear the manager speak to the mayor.
I just asked him, was he aware of it? Were you aware that that article, in that article that she, she said she mentioned capital?
To be honest, I don't remember exactly what I heard.
All right, what she did, she mentioned capital accounts. And now I asked you to email to send me all the accounts that the town has, correct? Are there any capital accounts associated with infrastructure in there?
No, there's not a strictly.
Does the town have a capital account that's associated with infrastructure? Okay, so that was not true, correct? If we don't have it, we don't have it.
I don't know exactly what was said.
You don't read the Twin City paper, you're our assistant?
I do, but I can't remember every word of that article.
Well, we're not gonna, we're not gonna go down that road. But just for a more clarification here, the mayor said that she was referring to accounts that don't exist. The assistant manager says, well, none of, I was in the meeting and none of that, nothing was said. The mayor said, well, I did say that. So all I'm saying is that we don't have, we don't have that money in the account. What she said was true. We don't have, once we do this twenty million dollar water project, we don't have no more money, folks. These are all the accounts that we have. We are solid, middle class, family. Okay, so
Mayor, if I may.
Hold on, I think I have a score. At some, at some point, we're gonna have to either raise taxes or raise your, your water bills because we don't have the money. And she spoke the truth the first time.
Mayor, if I may.
And now we're trying to back up, yes?
I don't call a point of order, I think this has gotten totally unhandled. This is not a, a forum for debate.
No, no, I just, I asked the, I asked the assistant town manager, who is fully capable, fifty thousand dollars, he is fully capable of answering questions, if he can't answer the questions, you just say, I don't know.
I'd like to make motion that we move forward with our agenda.
Your point of order has been held. We thank Councilman Kane for those insightful questions to inform the community and the citizens of Basford, Leesville of the actions of our town manager. Next on the agenda, and we thank Assistant Town Manager Luckadoo for the manager's report.
Thank you, Ted, I appreciate you, that was a question.
Next on the agenda is item seven, unfinished business. There are no items listed, so we will move to item eight, new, new business. Item eight under new business resolution declaring May tenth, two thousand and fourteen, a South Carolina Poetry Festival Day. I will read the resolution into the records and into the hearing of those in attendance this evening. The State of South Carolina, County of Lexington, Town of Basford, Leesville Resolution, where is the South Carolina Poetry Festival will be sponsored by the Leesville Emergence Association. And whereas with the dedication of the people of this community, the South Carolina Poetry Festival has been and will be one of the most popular and most successful festivals in this state. And whereas the South Carolina Poetry Festival provides a date for the entire family to enjoy the many activities and event schedule. And whereas the South Carolina Poetry Festival honors the poetry industry, which is vital to the economy, health, and well-being of the community, our state, and our nation. economy, health and well-being of the community, our state and our nation. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Bassburg Leesville Town Council proclaim Saturday, May tenth, two thousand fourteen, as South Carolina Poetry Festival Day. Be it further resolved that we extend a hearty invitation to everyone to join in the celebration of this event. Town of Bassburg Leesville, Charles Simpkins, Mayor Pro Temp, attest Patricia C. Jones, dated this fourteenth day, fourteenth day of April, two thousand fourteen. Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Motion to adopt.
Sir? Has been moved and second by this council. Is there any discussion? Councilman District One?
Yes.
Councilman District Two?
Yes.
Councilman District Three?
District Three votes yes.
Councilman District Five?
Yes.
Councilman District Seven?
Yes.
And Councilman District Four votes yes. Thank you, council. Next on the agenda, resolution prohibiting yard sales during South Carolina Poetry Festival Weekend, May ninth and tenth. The State of South Carolina, County of Lexington, Town of Bassburg Leesville Resolution, whereas the South Carolina Poetry Festival will be sponsored by the Leesville Merchants Association on Friday, May ninth, two thousand and fourteen, and Saturday, May tenth, two thousand fourteen. And whereas the Bassburg Leesville Town Council prohibits yard sale to be held on Poetry Festival Weekend and therefore be it further resolved that this is in effect for Poetry Festival Weekend, May ninth, two thousand fourteen, and May tenth, two thousand fourteen. Adopted this fourteenth day of April, two thousand and fourteen, Charles Simpkins, Mayor Pro Temp, attest this, um, fourteenth day of April, two thousand and fourteen, by Patricia Jones. Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Motion to adopt.
It has been moved and properly second that council adopt the resolution of the prohibition of, uh, yard sales to be held on Poetry Festival Weekend. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Councilman District Five?
I'd like it to be recorded that I'm going to vote against this because I feel it affects more than, I mean, it's affecting people that live far from where the events are being held. And if it's limited to within a thousand feet of any of the events, I'd be strongly for it. But I'm, I'm afraid that it hurts people that, really not individuals.
Is there any other, uh, discussion? Thank you, Councilman District Five. Um, I'm inclined to agree with you. I believe that yard sales would bring more people into the community during Poetry Festival Weekend, which would, uh, benefit the community and, uh, all that live in the community. Uh, Councilman District One?
District One votes no.
Councilman District Two?
Yes.
Councilman District Three?
District Three votes no.
Councilman District Five?
No.
Councilman District Seven?
Yes.
And Councilman District Four votes no. Thank you, council. Next on the agenda is resolution supporting fair housing and declaring the month of April as Fair Housing Month. The State of South Carolina County of Lexington, Town of Bassburg Leesville, a resolution of the mayor and council for the town of Bassburg Leesville, supporting fair housing and declaring the month of April as Fair Housing Month. Whereas the mayor and council for the town of Bassburg Leesville desire that the citizens of Bassburg Leesville be afforded the opportunity to obtain a decent, safe and sound living environment. And whereas the mayor and council reject discrimination in the provisions of housing on the basis of race, religion, color, sex, national origin, American status, um, family status, age or disability. And whereas mayor and council desire that every citizen be afforded the opportunity to select a home of his or her choice, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council for the town of Bassburg Leesville, that in order to accomplish these objectives, the town council does herein take the following actions. One, the mayor and council do hereby appoint the town manager as fair housing administrator. Two, the fair housing administrator shall receive any and all grievances concerning discrimination in the provisions of housing within the incorporated area of the town of Bassburg Leesville. Three, the fair housing administrator shall forward all such unresolved grievances to the State Human Affairs Commission. Four, the fair housing administrator will encourage all local realtors, homeowners and contractors to provide for non-discrimination in the provisions of housing within the incorporated area of the town of Bassburg Leesville. Five, the fair housing administrator shall make available fair housing publications of hood to the general public at the town of Bassburg Leesville's town hall. Six, the month of April shall be designated as Fair Housing Month in the town of Bassburg Leesville. Adopted this fourteenth day of April, two thousand and fourteen, Charles Simpkins, Mayor Pro Temp, attest this fourteenth day of April, two thousand and fourteen, by Patricia, uh, G. Jones. Counsel, what is your pleasure?
I'm going to amend it.
Do you have a motion on the floor?
I'm just, I'm just going to amend, amend the, I'm, I'm going to amend the resolution to, uh, include a point eight, that the town will, um, repeal its impact fees. The impact fees, uh...
Councilman, we need a motion on the floor.
I just moved it.
We need a motion on the floor to, to open this session.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve the resolution. Do we get a second?
Sir?
Has been moved and properly second that the town adopts the resolution of the mayor and council for the town of Bassburg Leesville, supporting fair housing and declaring the month of April as Fair Housing Month. Is there any discussion?
Uh, uh, Chair, I, I'd like to appeal to the, uh, parliamentarian on that because I think that the, um, the motion to amend comes before a motion to adopt. Because once, if we accept the amendment, then we can adopt it after then. I think that's the way the room, um, uh, does.
Well, we have to have it on the table for discussion.
But we, I'm going to amend it before we, uh, before we got to that point.
We will defer it to the attorney for clarification.
I'd like to step out and speak with Mr. Bradley. He doesn't tell me that I would be ruling as parliamentarian tonight. You said that was still open for y'all to vote on at the next, or discuss at the next workshop planning meeting. So I'm gonna step out and call in real quick if y'all want to.
He's always doing fine.
Motion for a six... Five-minute, uh, recess while the attorney compares with, uh, with council to rule on the, uh, the question at hand. Um, District One?
District One votes yes.
District Two? For a five-minute recess? District Three?
District Three votes yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District Seven?
Yes.
And District Four, uh, votes yes. We will now take a five-minute recess while until council comes back with the, uh, decision.
...
When did you get on the thing in the mail?
They gave you?
What did they do?
When they got Steve, you said, "Oh, rainbow?"
But it's been that one petition out there.
Motion for this council to come back, motion for council to come back and say...
Second.
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
District Three votes yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District Six?
I mean, Seven? Yes.
And District Four votes yes. We have a motion on the floor to accept the resolution, uh, to adopt, to adopt the resolution to support fair housing and declaring the month of April as Fair Housing Month. Counsel, you want to brief us?
Yes, I spoke with Attorney Stanley. There is a proper motion before the board has been made and has accepted. We either have to vote that motion up or vote it down if that is up.
Well, prior to that, I made the motion to amend.
No one seconded your motion and failed to go back and second. Now, as far as you making an amendment to, as I said, the motion that had already been made, the person who makes the motion and the person who seconded it must agree to take the amendment.
Well, I don't think anybody would give the option to second it, but that's fine.
Do you have a motion to amend?
Well, nobody does. I don't think we call for a second. But that's fine. We're able to go to, go, go to the court.
Is there any other discussion on the resolution?
I don't think, uh, council, I amend now that we have a discussion.
Are you making the motion?
The motion has been seconded. We're in discussion.
You, you can discuss it, sir.
Especially if, with the, um, with the men, motion to amend being ordered at this point.
From what Attorney Stanley tells me, the person who made the motion and the person who seconded the motion must agree to a take, must agree to take an amendment. We have to deal with the motion as it is right now on the table, but it's up for that unless you adopt.
Yeah, and, and as far as discussion is concerned, I just think that, um, that the town has had, uh, impact fees for about eight years now. And I don't think there's residential impact fees. And I don't think the residential, residential impact fees have generated the revenue that was anticipated. It is the, uh, the deterrent to builders and, um, uh, developers to come to Bassburg, and that's a part of growth. I think the election, oh, I know the election in District Three has less students graduating than I think than when you were there, uh, just left you. And in order for this community to grow and thrive, we have to build house. And we really need to address at some point the, um, the impact fees and, uh, what they are doing to prevent our residents from coming to build. Councilman District One?
Mayor, if I can, I feel that if there is a repeal of impact fees, that it should be a vote of the citizenry and not done in a resolution.
The citizens will vote.
That's true. Well, I, I do believe that it should be done through, uh, a resolution, citizens to vote on it.
I believe, I believe what councilman, uh, there is just to be saying that impact fees is an ordinance about the, by hence, or it would have to be definite as an ordinance to not a resolution.
No, 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 I'm just saying, as a resolution, I would put it as number eight, that we would work towards maybe an impact. This is a resolution, yes. It doesn't, it doesn't need...
Let me, let me, let me just say something about, um, about public, uh, represent this now. We are about to spend twenty billion dollars on a water project. And the people weren't given their, uh, an opportunity to work.
That's one part of the discussion we started.
Counsel, I'm going to go with it.
Well, we, we're talking about, um, we're talking about public, we're talking about, we were talking about, right? We were talking about making the public, kind of public to, uh, to be able to vote on something. What I'm saying is that...
I was just making the clarification. Rather than putting it in a resolution, I think it needs to be handled another way.
What else will mean? We can repeal it as council, as a res, as an ordinance, but we didn't... But we didn't give people. My point is just that we didn't give people the chance to vote on one of the biggest capital expenses that this town has ever made.
Thank you, councilman, for this three, but, uh, impact fees and not only agenda.
That's correct.
Uh, any other discussion? Councilman, district one, on the resolution?
District one votes yes.
Uh, councilman, district two.
Yes.
Councilman, district three.
District three votes yes.
Councilman, district five.
Yes.
Councilman, district seven.
Yes.
And councilman, district four votes yes. Next on the agenda, resolution declaring the week of May eleventh through the seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen, as the industry appreciation week. The state of South Carolina, county of Lexington, and town of Bay Harbor-Leeesville Resolution. Whereas the town of Bay Harbor-Leeesville is pleased to have a thriving community of industries to support the local economy. And whereas these industry, industrial companies provide essential employment opportunities for the citizens of Bay Harbor-Leeesville and the surrounding community. And whereas these industries, uh, industrial companies provide local revenues for which the entire citizenry benefits. And whereas the industrial businesses make a considerable contribution to our families and communities, often improving the overall quality of life. And whereas we recognize and appreciate these industrial businesses. And whereas we wish to show appreciation for our existing industry. And at the same time, welcome any and all potential new industries into our community. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Rita J. Crabs, do hereby declare the week of May seventeen. Week of May eleventh through the seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen, as industry appreciation week in the town of Bay Harbor-Leeesville. Adopted this fourteenth day of April, two thousand and fourteen, Charles Simpkins, Mayor Protem. Attests this fourteenth day of April, two thousand and fourteen, by Patricia G. Jones. Counsel, what is your pleasure?
I'm. 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 Pardon?
Oh, that's. Oh, that's.
Hello. Hello.
I have a. A motion to. A motion by councilman, district one, and a second by councilman, district five. Is there any discussion?
I did.
Uh, Mayor Rita J. Crabs.
What about?
Well, we getting council approval. I have to. That's. Any other discussion? Councilman, district one.
District one votes yes.
Councilman, district two.
Yes.
Councilman, district three.
District three votes yes.
Councilman, district five.
Yes.
Councilman, district seven.
Yes.
And councilman, district four votes yes. And we thank the, um. The, uh, business leaders of our community, the Economic Development Committee, and the Chamber of Commerce for these recommendations to council. And we thank council for its approval. Next on the agenda, item E, under new business, approval of amendments to the town of Bay Harbor-Leeesville employee handbook. Um, assistant town manager, you want to brief us on, um, these amendments?
Uh, everyone should have received a white paper memorandum. Um, just give a little bit about this. Everyone should have received the red line copy of the changes at the council work session last time. Hopefully you've had a chance to look through that. The personnel policy and procedures manual has to be updated every five years. Uh, this is fifth year. And really, the, the, the vast majority of changes were, uh, made at the, um. The labor attorneys told us what needed to be changed based on changes to state law and federal laws concerning, um, workforce labor.
So these changes were mandated by state code?
Uh, the majority of them, yes. There were some minor changes, uh, that were made that came from employees that, that had made mention. Um, but those were very minor things that, that, uh, didn't have a big impact on it.
Counsel, what is your pleasure? Motion to approve? Motion to approve by councilman, district two.
I'll second.
Second by councilman, district five. Is there any discussion?
Miss Leventhal, how did you know those changes in the handbook reference council?
No, they did not.
Okay. Any other discussion? Councilman, district one.
District one votes yes.
Councilman, district two.
Yes.
Councilman, district three.
District three votes yes.
Councilman, district five.
Yes.
Councilman, district seven.
Yes.
And councilman, district four votes yes. Thank you, council. Next on the agenda, item F, under new business, approval of tree removal at the Wilson Street Park. I believe council received, um, information on the bids in your packet. What is your pleasure?
Your recommendation from seven.
Uh, is there a recommendation from, uh, town hall?
Also in, uh, provided another memorandum, white paper, just giving the issue, the discussion, and the recommendation. Um, looked at the scope of work that each person that, uh, put in a quote, what they quoted. The scope of work was pretty much the same, which was to cut the four trees, remove the four trees from the property when done. Um.
And that debris?
That's removal of all debris from the property as well. Um, three services were, were asked of quoting and to put in. So fifty-three fifty was the cheapest one, based on the scope of work being the same. Um, we would recommend going with, uh, the fifty-three fifty from, um, Bizarre Tree Service. Bizarre Tree.
Counsel, what is your pleasure?
I make a motion that we approve the low bid.
I like the fifty-three fifty. Have it removed and properly seconded? That the low bidder fifty-three fifty be accepted, um, for the removal of the four trees in Wilson Street Park. Is there any discussion?
I drove out there and, and looked at these trees. And, uh, not only is, is it due to the, uh, one of the trees is, is really hollow and a lot of the large leaves falling, but they're all gum balls trees. And there are gum balls all over the play area. And so when you have children out there, unless you take a, a rake and spend about an hour raking, um, then it's difficult for the children to play as well.
Mayor Protem, counsel, if I may. Um, additionally, the park is not only closed due to indefinitely, due to the trees, but also some of the playground equipment, um, needs some, uh, needs some improvements. Um, they're, they're not as safe as it could be. Um, staff is working to fix that as well while the park is closed.
So you, you know that there is a slide award that before that park, they're sitting at the water department, it started to fake, it's sitting in the weather. And we were promised, uh, two or three years ago that that slide award would be put there. There's equipment down at the, um, at the water department that just needs to be, uh, installed at that park.
I wasn't aware of that, but I would look into that by tomorrow.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Motion for approval of tree removal at the Wilson Street Park, uh, councilman, district one.
District one votes yes.
Councilman, district two.
Yes.
Councilman, district three.
District three votes yes.
Councilman, district five.
Yes.
Councilman, district seven.
Yes.
And councilman, district four votes yes to accept the motion of the low bid. Next on the agenda, under new business, item G, approval of auditing services for fiscal years two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, and two thousand and seventeen, eighteen. Counsel, what is your pleasure? Do we need an update from, a recommendation from, um?
Let's, let's. Let's.
Yes. The, the. The recommendation.
And we put the motion on the floor.
I'll leave it. We accept the low bid.
Is there a second? Has been moved and properly seconded? That the low bid be accepted? Um, is there any discussion?
Well, I'd just like to say that while Keith Dooley has done the town a good job for the last few years, from my perspective, there's a considerable difference in prices here.
Leave it to, it's to the tune of fifty-one thousand dollars.
That's right, over five years.
Forty.
Forty. And that's one of the reasons I say, uh, just like you need to change attorneys every once in a while, you need, you might need to change your accounts every once in a while.
Thank you, council. Any other discussion?
You take your turn. Oh, I'll do it quick. I'm. I, I'm just saying, I, 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 I'm gonna go with the, um, with the, uh, with the recommendation of, uh, of staff. But, um, you, when there's a price difference like that, we know we're doing, um, renovations and whatnot. Uh, we, we really need to be careful that we're getting happens for happens. Um, when we, uh, when we, when we switch like that. Dooley has been, uh, good and faithful. I think his price is about right. So, um, we try, but we really need to think about, um, I mean, that's a drastic difference in prices.
Look, if I may, um. Certainly, this is a, a, a four-year contract, um, that the proposal was put in for. I will say that if we do go through a year, if we set the, uh, Newsome, um, Newsome and Company, then if this year we don't like it, there is an opt-out. As long as you give a hundred and twenty days notice, um, prior to an exonerating. So if any issues do occur, we do have the ability to opt-out.
Is this somebody that you know? You know these people?
I do not have these people.
But we have an.
Okay. What, what, in that relationship, I'm. You suck it or not?
Well, any other? That's, that's within the contract. Any other discussion?
Are you sure that's in the contract? Have you seen? Has our attorney seen it? I'm just saying, I don't want to block this.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah.
Um, I believe this has to, it's contractual matter and it has to go in executive session.
But. Really. I don't, I don't, I don't think that this particular contract has to go in an executive session, but our attorney's right here. So. Uh, council, do we need to go into an executive session?
I think we can just handle this and not go too much further into the details. If, I'll just read aloud real quick, um, right here. The town can cancel this agreement without cause by written notice delivered no less than a hundred and twenty calendar days prior to any fiscal year.
So we have. All right. Let's see.
Any other discussion? Councilman, district one.
District one votes yes.
Councilman, district two.
Yes.
Councilman, district three.
District three votes yes.
Councilman, district five.
Yes.
Councilman, district seven.
Yes.
And councilman, district four votes yes for the motion of Newsome and Company. Thank you, council. Um, there are no contractual matters that it's not a need to go in executive session, nor possible actions by council to follow up to executive session. So we will skip down to item, um, eleven to address councilwoman Melissa. Is that? Kitty? Kitty.
Really? Thank you for allowing me to be with you this evening. I can't. I can't speak to you as well.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. It's on. She got too close to it.
Um, I did want to inform the community that this is National Library Week. The Bay Harbor-Leeesville Ranch Library is joining libraries nationwide to celebrate the special week of the year. It's a time for us to highlight the value of school and public libraries in our community and celebrate how lives are changed by the work they do and the services they provide. Our local library offers more than books, online resources, and literacy programs. We also offer, uh, training in technology, assistance with job seeking, and also opportunities for lifelong learning. Uh, thank you to the community for the support you provide through your tax, the taxes you pay. Uh, and I also just want to express that as having been the Ranch Library just over a year now, I now feel, uh, that I better understand the importance of working with our elected officials, our business owners, students, and the public at large, to learn what our community needs are and how we can work together to meet them. My six coworkers and I are deeply committed to the library being a trusted place where everyone in the community can gather to enrich not only their own lives, but also our entire community. As the town of Batesburg Leesville continues to grow and evolve and seeks to improve, we also, as a library, want to grow and evolve so that we can better assist in the changes that are facing the members of our community. Thank you for providing me with the opportunity to speak this evening, and I want to encourage you to continue allowing the library to be an individual part of your life and the community of Batesburg Leesville. Thank you.
Yeah, Melissa, what is your position with library?
I'm a Leesville Ranch librarian.
Continue the good work.
Just a minute for a quick comment to the audience. I don't know if a lot of people realize it, but the Lexington County Library started in Batesburg many years ago. It's squid, and then the book will be around Batesburg all over, and now it's in all of the states.
Well, we are proud of our brand.
Thank you so much. Next on the agenda, we have to address Counsel, Elan Buzar. He requests me to speak on water sewer budget and council behavior. Elan?
Mayor of Council, Assistant. They say you can't go back in time, but believe me, we certainly did on the night of March 10th of 2014. We went back fifty years to bull, collar, police cars, water hoses, and building stuff. We went back to these segregated lunch counters and the tactics of fear and intimidation. The tactics didn't work then, and they don't work now. We have done ourselves irreparable harm in the eyes of potential employees and anyone who would bring real growth and jobs here. My fellow Michelin employees are always asking me, Buzar, why do you live over there? Don't you believe for one minute that this is not the prevailing opinion about our community? The way the police behave is unforgivable and shameful. The way other council members said, "I'll abide while this moral outrage was taking place," and totally unaffected. Lexington County Council Frank Townsend and Raff County said, "I'll abide as well," Assistant. Did people stand up outraged? No, they did not. This is yet another blackout for our community, and let me say, a well-deserved blackout. When you combine distributed behavior with outrageous water bills and overall degrading appearance of our community, clearly, we are in trouble. We can't help but wonder, what kind of future do we really have? The most talented comment I've had came from the mayor when she commented to my wife, "No comments from the peanut gallery." So, ladies and gentlemen, we are taxpaying citizens, not the peanut gallery. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Next to address Counsel, Ms. Hansley Buzar requests you to speak on water sewer budget and council behavior. Ms. Buzar?
Let me say this. All the builders in Columbia have read every article written in the Twin Cities about impact fees. And their consensus to a man is, they are all inadequate. We need the builders. They don't need us. And if you doubt that, call Michael up and ask him whether he locked himself those thirty locks in the venue. Let's talk about Robert's Rules of Order. For those of you who've actually taken the class and read the handbook, the handbook for elected officials says, "Use Robert's Rules of Order as a guide only, because it works against citizens." Next of all, when you use Robert's Rules of Order, the number one rule is, you actually have a copy of Robert's Rules of Order on hand. Imagine that. Ladies and gentlemen, let me say this to you. I'm gonna go down to Lexington, and I'm gonna listen to the tape that the email refers to, because I assure you, whether our mayor's saying that we don't have any money or not, in fact, we don't have any money for living paycheck to paycheck. But some people will not believe it, will not embrace or accept it until the headlines in the state paper say Batesburg Leesville is bankrupt and opposed a job for federal representation. And as far as impact fees, Rachel, you did say that you're standing on your deck. You know you can repeal impact fees, just like the Institute did. In fact, I actually do know that. Ladies and gentlemen, let me read to you from a Thursday, July 16, 2009, letter to the editor. Don't you just love it when people memorialize their bigotry, their hatred? Let me read this to you. This article is written by Rick Cracks, our current mayor. This was a night, as you've all been discussing, where, how many times did I ask Joe In? I said, "Joe In, Gilbert is never going to stay again," and they didn't. I tell you now, USDA will not fund this project, and they won't, okay? The badgering, this is ridiculous for us. The badgering of the town management zone has questioned its badgering. Continued, and aim was also taken at the town attorney. Again, I tried to gavel the out-of-line loan councilman down to prefer the councilman's name. He again verbally refused to yield to the chair, and that's the fact. I told the councilman that if he did not calm down and yield to the chair, I'd have him removed from the chamber for such a refusal, as well as disrupting the council meeting. Still, he verbally refused. I called to the police chief several times, I'm a business manager, to remove the troublemaker. Chip was unaware, kind of handled the scenario, as we have never been faced with such thing. She goes on, "I continue to gavel the unruly child down, as long as there's no respect." There's not mutual respect for each other and the citizens, and not only that, for people who have come in here, and the first time they looked at their package was as they sat at the desk. We are not going anywhere. Gavel away, Charles. It won't change the facts on the ground.
Thank you for your comments. God theory, man, I just happen to believe that regardless of the actions of some, that all things work together for the good for them that love the Lord. And I believe God's hands on this community. Thank you all so much. Motion to adjourn? Are there any media or citizens' questions? Let me just take this opportunity to thank all of those who took the time to come out to see me to witness your building at work. I believe that your presence does have an impact upon the way that this town is managed. So, we thank you for your presence. Are there any questions?
My name is Barbara Martin. I live in Brooklyn. I'm in this room. I wanted to know if y'all have any rules, because I don't understand why she couldn't speak. Couldn't finish in the background. Because I was just wondering, is there a certain time? Is there one minute?
Yes, ma'am, there is. Three-minute timer to get everybody heard and get a comment from everyone who wants to speak. We place a three-minute timer, and we must prepare for that. Yes, ma'am.
There's no order. There's no order.
We don't have a rule for that. That's not true.
No, he knows that.
Counselman?
Can you come to the microphone, sir?
Yeah, we did the article by Suzette. Miss Suzette, autographed in 2004 news. However, the article was very interesting. It was one that really got me out here. I had to go to a politician back in the day for the big city. But, no, I'm here. It's not too good if I grew up in a very sad. One of the freedom of speech. As she said in this article, in democracy, it's always curious what. And you guys, not pointing anything at anyone, but you have a sense of close shop. Where people ain't stressing themselves, dictating shit. You know what I'm saying? Advice, man. You know, dissent is a part of democracy. You don't want dissent. You want to ride this horse, this community. Look at these people. People are suffering, and nowhere near the voices. They're not being heard. The last thing she said here, the mayor want to put you on agenda, determine her discretion whether you can speak or not. We know that is. That's the form of material. And some things have changed, and some things haven't changed. Some people haven't changed. But, you know, freedom of speech is something that we're entitled to. The other, it doesn't have no distinction, no color or anything. So, yeah, well, that's the most important thing here. You guys don't try to stifle it from the community. But, you know, if you start a movement like that.
Sir, I believe that you have the opportunity to speak at this point, and everyone who wanted to address Counsel had the opportunities to speak. And anybody else who wants to speak has the opportunity to do that.
Charles, he was talking about the proposed rules that we're gonna debate that limits people's speech. That's what he's referring to. Not what you're doing right now today.
But we can allow people to take as much time as they would like to say. We could be here all night.
Well, I understand. No, no, I'm not worried about it. I mean, this, I'm just saying. That we're gonna be debating coming up. Right, but that's what I'm saying. In those rules, it says that freedom has discretion. Who can speak, and for how long they can speak, and that's what he's addressing.
We have a session on the 20th there.
I understand that, but that's what he's.
Well, he's gonna be glad to hear that he's up to the street. And he'll be admiring it right. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else? Again, thank you all. Yes, ma'am. Would you come to the microphone?
I was asking why there was a three-minute limit.
Because if we allowed everybody to come and to talk as long as they wanted to, then it would get out of hand, and they would not be able to hear that. So, we limited the three minutes per person, and I believe that if you want to make a point, you can do that within three minutes.
But the school board didn't.
This is not the school board. Thanks, ma'am. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I have the same sentiment as this young lady. What need is there for me to come to my council? If you're gonna tell me how long, I can tell you what's bothering me, what's going on. I may not be able to get it over to you in three minutes. So, you leave here not knowing exactly what I'm talking about. What gives you the right to tell me? I mean, I know you have to be common sense. I wouldn't be here all night. But three minutes? You know, by the time I address you, that's one of my minutes. Having a minute is me getting up out of my seat, getting up here. And before I get to my point, my three minutes is up. And if I touch on a subject that's distressing or disturbing, my three minutes are really flat, and the gavel comes down on me. So, I leave more disturbed than I was before I came.
But is your councilman not here at the meeting? Can you not discuss it with your councilperson after the meeting or prior to the meeting? Or at any time, you can call your councilman and make sure and make sure that that issue is dealt with, is handled.
But I want to say that sometimes people have spoken with their councilperson, they've spoken with the staff, and they want to put it on the record. That's all. And we know that.
And we give them three minutes to.
Right, and that's fine, Charles, but, you know, we don't have twenty people lined up to speak like the school board do sometimes. We only have two or three people that like to speak sometimes. So, why not just give people five minutes to speak and let them say what they have to say? I mean, that's what this gentleman was talking about when he talked about hearing. You, 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 you know, you hear what people are saying. You hear what they're saying.
We have a work session to deal with.
I'm saying that.
And procedures are what it's there.
And they give their input towards it.
That's deal with it.
Okay, but they are. Charles, they give their input prior to that, because they're not allowed to speak at that work session.
The councilperson will.
If I can speak to you, I am your councilperson. And it is my understanding when I ran for council, that how it works, that the council meetings are actually to conduct council business, that it is a time to address what's on the agenda, that people that come to the council are supposed to speak only on what items are on the agenda. That how it works is that if you have an issue, in your case, you would come to me with your issue, I would discuss it with you. If it's something that I can deal with for you, then I will. If I cannot, I can direct you to whom you're supposed to speak with. If it's a matter of me going to town hall and trying to find satisfaction there, that is my free recourse. If I cannot, that you will. Then if in fact, that you can't get satisfaction through me, then it is when you come for counsel to address the issue that you can't get resolved.
With all due respect, Counsel, when you had taken the courses, the four, all the courses for the training for council, that's not how.
And that's true.
Right, so that's not how it works. You talked about something.
I have asked you, and you would say, "I don't know. I really don't know." But I'll look into that. But, you know, get back to me.
I did. I got back with you exactly what your property was on to ask, and that was your question to me.
My question was, I did not understand with the church being in front of me, and I couldn't use my building as a church, and then there's a business, a car lot next to me. I still don't understand that. I don't quite understand the zoning. And the main question I was concerned about, I asked, and it was something about the grandfathers. Right, okay. Granddad, grandma, something like that. But anyway, the thing that I really couldn't ever get to the bottom root of, who do I go to? Where do I find? Which area was there first? The temple's place or the place across the street from me? And I was told that the reason that could not be deemed, and I wasn't talking about a everyday Sunday church. I was talking more about a religious environment, not per se, just a seven-day, one-a-night church, but meetings and that type of thing. There were young people just walking the street. I even voiced that in my letter when I approached the council. I said, "You rather see them walk the streets, or you can put them in jail?" When I had thirty-six young people coming to my place to meet. Someone coming out of the closet because they are too ashamed, too afraid to talk to people. You have councilors, they would go to talk to council because they felt like the council was gonna tell everybody else. That's what my building was being used for. That was the main thing that I wanted to use it for. But what they got hung up on, everybody got hung up on, I wanted to have a church. I wanted to have a church. Well, to me, anything that's uplifting, upbuilding our people, any people, anybody, that is church. That's part of ministry. We're all ministers, if we're right in here. We ought to help each other, and that's what I wanted to use my building for. But I could never figure out, it was always because you can't use it as a church. And I couldn't distinguish what you meant when we say, "You can't use it as a church." All the councils we had were not held in church, but we had service, church service in that building. I couldn't, I couldn't, I couldn't, and I still can't.
Thank you, Lord.
You understand what I'm saying, if I say that?
I do.
Anyone else? Thank you all once again for your input and your presence. Good night.